...nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas land, our public relations to the deed of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dr. Romans, thank you, sir, very much. Again, thank you all for being here today. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Ms. Waskey, do we have any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Do not. Item one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court on November 26, 2019. Any questions, comments, additions or deletions? Pardon us a moment, we're having technical difficulty.
Hearing none, Judge, I move that we approve the minutes as presented for Commissioners' Court, November 26, 2020.
Nineteen. Nineteen.
I got a black screen.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. We'll give him just a moment. Item number two, consider and take action on the Henderson County CDL drug and alcohol testing policy and procedures. Mr. Bynum?
Yes, sir, Court. Couple of weeks ago, we actually had a workshop discuss some changes that we needed to make in our CDL alcohol and drug policy. So, as y'all saw on Page Seven and on Page Ten, we just needed to correct two words that was in this policy, just so that we're actually up to speed with everything. So, that's all I'm doing is bringing this to y'all today to just get your approval, and we'll make it effective today if at all possible. As we discussed also, I think that I spoke with county attorney about this. So, after the approval, we'll actually go to all the CDL drivers and get them to re-sign all of this paperwork, just so that we have it on file. So, that'll be something that myself and the HR director will be doing. So, that's all I have on it.
In the copy, there doesn't show reference of the changes, which it would. Could you remind us exactly what those changes are?
Yes, so on Page Seven, under the substance prohibited and prescription medications, down there, when it talks about those, it's opiates, and we're going to change that to opioid. And again, I think the sheriff explained a little bit about what the differences is on that. And then on Page Ten, same thing down there on your bullet towards the end, that's exactly what we changed also there.
Any questions for Mr. Bynum?
I have none.
I have none, Judge.
Entertained a motion.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Just to bring up, because there was something else that we brought up during the workshop, just to let y'all know, I'm actually going to be attending or listening in on a webinar that's going to be talking about the clearinghouse. It's going to be coming up in January of 2020. So, I've also discussed that with our HR director, so I think that she and I are both going to try to be in on that. So, that does not affect this policy. So, as soon as I get information about all of that, I'll feel more comfortable about talking to you gentlemen about that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the CDL drug alcohol testing policy and procedures as presented today's agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the Henderson County CDL drug and alcohol testing policy and procedures revisions. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, sir. Item three is consider and take action on rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum at meetings of the Henderson County Commissioners' Court. This past legislative session, there was House Bill 2840 that made changes to public participation at Commissioners' Court meetings. After much consultation with county attorney and his input, and of the Commissioners' Court of its, during our workshops, we had to make just a few slight changes, and I would ask that our county attorney, if he would come forward and speak to it.
Most of this policy is what we followed all along and been following. The big change, the statute that the judge referenced changed was that now by law, we have to offer members of the public an opportunity to speak, not only before Commissioners' Court meetings, but during. There were some other things in the bill that really just did not apply to us. That was the big change for us. For example, there are still city councils and courts out there that just do not allow members of the public to speak, period. That was one of the changes that the legislature wanted to make sure they changed, is for the opportunity for the public to speak, and that did include either before Commissioners' Court or during, so we modified our policy to include that.
Other than that, there were really no, as far as our previous practices, there was really not a great change.
We had never put it in writing, but we've kind of always followed the three-minute rule, is what we allow people to speak on, is three minutes. We did put a total limitation, so one speaker cannot speak for more than 30 minutes at any single Commissioners' Court meeting. So, if you had 10 agenda items, they would be maxed at 30. If you had more than 10, and they wanted to speak at three minutes on each, they would be capped at 30.
Questions?
The forms, we have a couple of changes on it, I mean, that we did have make a change on it, right?
That was, again, part of that change was on our form now, that the public uses to fill out as to whether or not they want to speak. We just included a different checkbox that asks the public, do they want to speak before Commissioners' Court meeting, or do they want to speak at the time that the particular agenda item is brought up? And so, from that point, it's going to take a little bit more logistics for the clerks and county judge to coordinate, you know, kind of look at those forms ahead of time. Instead of people speaking beforehand, they can come, they can speak before court, and they can leave, or if they want to wait till the item is called, they can come speak right before that item is called by the court. Doesn't change anything from the, doesn't create a question and answer or rhetorical setting of any sort. It's simply that, the opportunity for the public to speak. It probably, too, all know, and we talked all, talked about this, but for the public's benefit, we talked about this a lot in the workshop on it, again, this is one of those bills that there are larger cities, larger counties, larger school districts, that this will impact more than it will impact Henderson County. I've been here 11 years as the county attorney, and probably by far, the largest speaker turnout that I've seen was when we went to vote centers last year. I mean, even in the days of the Freedom from Religion and things like that, we just haven't had a whole lot of public comment. We know from watching the news that that is not necessarily the case in Dallas County, Carrington County, Harris County, and some of these bigger things, you know, ISDs and school districts, they often have meetings that go on for six, seven, eight hours for a public comment. And again, in my 11 years, I just haven't seen that.
Is there a, in that bill, does it regulate how many people can speak on one topic?
No, no, no. What it says is that the Commissioners' Court can place reasonable limitations or reasonable restrictions on the public's ability to speak. One thing that, in drafting this, one thing that I had seen that other counties had done is they put that 30-minute cap for a particular agenda item. And so, what some counties are doing is they're saying, you know, if you've got agenda item number three, there's a 30-minute max that the public can speak on that, which would limit it to 10 individuals. We did not include that in the version of our draft. I have questions about whether or not that's going to be held up as being reasonable, because if I happen to be the 12th person that wants to speak on the items, and the others use three minutes each, you know, my voice goes unheard, just by virtue of I was 12th in line. So, you know, we didn't take that approach. We restricted it to, based on the individual speaker over all time.
Well, thank you, sir, very much. If there's no further comments, entertain a motion.
So moved. I'll second it.
Motion made by, excuse me, Commissioner Tulley, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum at the meetings of the Henderson County Commissioners' Court. All those in favor? Item passes. Item number four, consider and take action to reappoint Henderson County Fire Marshal for a two-year term beginning January 1 of 2020. Gentlemen, as you know, that the term for a fire marshal is of two years, and we have been able to keep our appointment associated with the calendar year, and it's come that time again, that our fire marshal appointment is due. We can bring the fire marshal up and ask him a lot of questions if we so choose, maybe the public might enjoy it a little bit. But, gentlemen, open to any comments or discussions here. I believe Mr. Renberg's done us a great job over the last, this will be the third appointment? Fourth appointment? So, his six years as fire marshal, and previous years as a deputy fire marshal. So, if there's any comments or questions, entertain them.
I'd like to start and say how lucky we are to have our fire marshal that we've got in place. I didn't realize it's been that long. Done a great job for me as far as precinct one, always picking up his phone to answer my calls, and I've given him and his staff a ton of calls. Unfortunately, we have a lot of illegal dumps in the county, we have other things that come up, but Shane has always been very, very good to answer his phone and respond, and his staff has been excellent also. They have really stepped up for me in precinct one, and I think for the whole county. So, I'd first like to say we're very lucky to have the fire marshal we have, and the staff that he has along with him, so.
I echo one's verbiage, but also, I'd like to see in this term that we move illegal dumping of mattresses to the fire marshal's office and give him a dump truck.
I'll echo the other two statements, and any time I've ever had to call the fire marshal's office, that they've been proven proficient in their actions, and I think they've done, Shane has done a great job, and his whole staff has done a great job for the county.
Well, I will sum up with our fire marshal, I have seen him since he first came to work here. I've watched the young man grow in responsibility and experience, and we appreciate what you've done. We do, you've taken, helped push forward a program, public nuisance, plus what the state has been increasing down on all departments, and most specifically yours, with them pushing down the responsibilities that used to be done at the Austin level, down on local. And being a small office, we know how much of an impact that can be. So, thank you for what you've done. Gentlemen, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make that motion, that we reappoint Shane Renberg as our Henderson County Fire Marshal for two more years, at least.
I'd like to second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the reappointment of Shane Renberg for the Henderson County Fire Marshal for another two-year term. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? This time, been requested to pass over item five, move on to item six, which is consider and take action to allow the sheriff's office to use inmate labor at the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake for certain projects. Sheriff?
Good morning, Court. I was contacted by the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake, requesting inmate labor usage over there. They are 501(c)(3), which that's basically the way we can help them, if the court allows us to. And they said they've got a few projects over, they've got a fencing project, they need some ditches dug, and just a couple of day jobs that they want. They did request wanting trustee labor out there every week, just as we do the county shelter here. I explained to them that, you know, that the shelter here was a county shelter, and I just don't have the manpower or trustees to be able to work out there, you know, three or four days a week, inmate labor. But I was willing to work with them if the court allows to do certain day projects throughout the year as they come along.
Questions for the sheriff?
Have we done this before?
Not, should I remember, no, sir.
Not for this organization?
No, I got, that's what I meant.
Sheriff, a number of years ago, the state or jail commission really cranked down on who was, what classifications or individuals charged with certain offenses, on who would be eligible to be trustees, and that really put a dent in the available individuals for that. There has not been much change in that in recent years, is that correct?
That is correct. The only thing that we've changed at the sheriff's office is, it used to, we had just strictly male outside trustees to do work programs. Now, I do allow, in certain circumstances, female outside trustees to do outside labor, and of course, that's what we're using over here at the Henderson County county shelter, and it's working out, and that's kind of bumped my numbers up a little bit.
Okay. When the program first started, we had ample supply, but the jail standards became very concerned with who was out there, and it eliminated a lot of skilled labor.
Yes, the way they wrote it up is if we believe they have ever been involved in, not charged with, but if they've ever been involved in some, I say violent activity, which is basically, I mean, if they basically did a Class C assault by threat, which is like a speeding violation, that would kick them out of the program.
I wanted that, we used to rely on that a great deal, that labor to help supplement a lot of needs, and that's why it's had to be reduced over the years. I wanted for the public to understand that.
And if we are allowed to do this, just to assist us, because we do have inmate labor throughout the week with different agencies here in the county, I'm going to do my best to work with them, and they're probably going to have to do these projects on the weekend when my inmates are in the jail, so it's not taking away from anything else that we've got going on.
Any other comments? Entertain?
Will you have to send somebody with the inmates?
Yes, sir, we'll have to send, there'll have to be a certified jailer with them.
Will they, will they have a certified jailer there, or will it be one?
No, sir, it'll be one.
Any other comments?
How does that work with, is there restrictions, are there restrictions on 40 hours a week?
I can actually work on 48 hours.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Okay. With that?
I'm sorry, I do have another question. So, you're okay with it, and think that you can help them?
I'm okay with the, like, the ditch that they need, they need to put a electric fence under, or electric fencing underneath the ground by the fence, so they need to ditch dogs, and, I mean, there's a couple of small projects they want done, and I think we can go out there and knock them out.
Okay. And is this going to give him authority to do this to the end of the year, or all the time?
Once they are on the, been approved, it's continual.
Yes, it's in the past, once the court's approved.
Until the court, if the court took action to remove them.
Remove.
Anything else?
No, I'm good now.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, that we let the sheriff's, or use the sheriff's office for inmate labor for the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake, located in precinct one.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the request for the use of the inmate labor. All those in favor? Item passes. Item seven, consider and take action to accept the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number 11 financial statement for fiscal year 2019 through 2020, period ending August of 2019. And for those of you looking at the agenda, yes, it did state number one, it was an error, should have been 11. And I have consulted with the county attorney on this, and says that it's clerical area, and we're able to take action on it. So, Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, in your package, you can see that the financial statement for ESD 11, that's the one that's located in precinct one and in precinct four, it splits, it's actually in the Shady Oaks area, and that's the financial statement is correct and in place as required.
Questions for the commissioner? If not, entertain a motion.
Well, Judge, if there's not any questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial statement presented by the ESD Number 11 for the year 2019 through 2020.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the financial statement for ESD 11. All those in favor? Item passes. Item eight, consider and take action to reappoint two board members to serve on the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number 11 Board of Commissioners, located in precinct one and four, for the appointment that will expire on December 31 of 2021. Commissioner?
Again, in your package, it's ESD 11, located at Shady Oaks, precinct one, precinct four. There's two board members that are up, and they have agreed to serve another term, and those two board members are Bradford Skiles and Dr. Jesse Richardson. And I think they've been on the board since the start of the board, or close to it, and they both have done a good job, and I'd recommend that we reappoint them to back.
Questions for Commissioner Thomas? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
If there's not any questions, Judge, I'd like to reappoint, recommend reappointing two board members, Dr. Jesse Richardson and Bradford Skiles, to the Henderson County ESD Number 11 for years 2019, 2020, or two years, up to 21, I guess. I'm sorry, it's a two-year term.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Tulley, to reappoint two members to the Board of Commissioners for Henderson County Emergency Service District Number 11, those individuals being Bradford Skiles and Dr. Jesse Richardson, for two-year term. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Court. Thank you. Item 10, receive financial reports.
Judge, I have none for today.
I have none for today. Excuse me, I jumped over nine, and got it right here in front of me. Number nine, consider and take action to appoint members of the Emergency Service District Number Two, expiring December 31, 2021.
I need to get you one of those ticket deals to pull down.
I was told to get, I was told to bring a ruler. She will go unnamed, who said that, but please, Commissioner, continue.
Yes, Court, the Henderson County ESD Number Two, out of Payne Springs, Chet Martyr is, has agreed to continue his appointment through 2021. We want to, Bill Gordon is not going to serve anymore, so we want to tell him thank you very much for his service to ESD Two, and we're looking to fill his spot with Jody Vinsick, and him and Chet have talked, Chet is the president, him and Chet has talked, and they're ready to move forward.
Questions for Commissioner Tulley? You sure about these?
Fifty-fifty.
You talking about our Jody Vinsick, by the way?
There he is, where is he?
So, Chet has, I'll tell the public, Chet has it really set up to have a overall broad aspect of the representation for ESD Two, and they were needing an area over by Michael's Cove, and Jody fits that, you know, for that area that they were requesting to have somebody serve. So, anyway, they all look forward to it, and they had a great meeting the other night, so it's good.
Good deal. Entertain a motion.
To reappoint Chet? Is there two motions, or just one?
We can go ahead and do it all in one motion, to reappoint Chet Martyr. Put it this way, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Chet Martyr for a two-year term, and to appoint Jody Vinsick to...
A two-year term?
To a two-year term as well.
So moved.
There you go.
You did good.
Do we have a second? Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the reappointment of Chet Martyr and the appointment of Jody Vinsick to the ESD Two Board of Commissioners for two-year terms. Any further comments? All those in favor? Item passes. Now, just for fun, financial, receive financial reports, we don't have any. Item 11, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet.
I do have payroll totals for biweekly 24.
Questions for Ms. Harris?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the payroll distributions for biweekly Number 24. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, and I have no account sheets this week.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 12, consider and take action on submitted contracts. Have none. Item 13, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits, I believe we have one in precinct three.
I have one in precinct three from Bethel Ash Water Supply Company, they want to bore under 9450 County Road 3910. This would be a 100 feet total, private to private. Bethel Ash always does what needs to be done to make sure everything's done right, and their payment is with the form.
Questions for the commissioner? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll move that we grant the Bethel Ash Water Supply Company right-of-way to bore under 9450 County Road 3910 in precinct three.
I'll second his motion, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the right-of-way permit for Bethel Ash Water Supply Corporation to bore under County Road 3910. Commissioners authorization, sign?
Yes.
All those in favor? Item passes. Item 14, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments.
About 10 years, I've got a handful of them.
Questions for our auditor? These are mainly, can be described as cleanup.
Yes, the only thing of interest really was on Conspul precinct two, his car needed a new heater core, and so we're moving that out of the reserve.
That's the vehicle that we have scheduled to replace next year. We still have to address the issue. We still have to address the issue. He did call and ask about that prior to... Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion on the amendments.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the budget amendments as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item Fifteen, consider and take action on payment of bills. We do not have any bills today. Item Seventeen, open and consider bids. We have no bids. Stop skipping Platts. No Platts either, right?
Yes.
Precinct One.
Hold up.
How could I forget about them?
Number One does have one.
Go ahead.
Okay.
In Precinct One, there is a subdivision, a small subdivision going in up in the stacks part of the precinct. It's called Isabella Estates, and this morning I have Tyler with Valen Weeks, if anybody got any questions about these subdivisions. 14 lots.
I'm sorry, I am sorry, I skipped that.
I think I told you before.
Didn't you tell me before, Coach?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I believe all the signatures, everything that's required is on the map.
Let's share.
As you want, though.
Thank you.
Coffee is in, certification tax are being paid. I've been up there along with Tyler, we've actually met a couple of times up there on this location.
It's a little flat, so they're going to have to build the, it's mobile homes, they're going to build it up off the ground. There's just barely any relief across the whole property.
It's coming off County Road 2141 and 2147. There are no roads involved. These are just going to be lots with a drive-in into each lot, and he's asked me to install the culverts as he purchased them, and we'll do that as, as needed. I believe there's 14 lots, some different sizes, like the smallest one's a little over two and a half acres, maybe they go up to about five. Four.
How are they going to handle? Lots One and Two are going to be very difficult due to the transmission line. Three, they can get around as far as selling, building on, but...
Right.
One and Two...
One would just be, the house that's closest to Road Two would just be, have to be way back in the back or squeezed. He'd have a hard time putting it there in the bottom left. More likely it's way in the back, so that Lot Two would be a hard sell because your driveway is going to be really long.
Right.
So, it's not super practical, but...
Yeah, he knows that that one may be sold as the one.
Okay.
He's, he's looking at that. He's going to try it at this point for two. It is a low area, but they look, they've looked at it, and they know they're going to have to build up a little bit.
Given that particular area over there, and it just came to my mind, have they been, I wonder if the soil type has been surveyed for his percolation and all of that?
It's very, the clay is very expansive.
Right.
It's not the most ideal soil for anything. Mostly, they contact the county, who does that, outside sewer stuff?
Yeah, that'd be James.
Yeah.
James Bailey.
Okay.
As far as that, did James send off on it, right? Does that mean they've already done the test, or is that...
I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
Maybe that's done when they file a permit.
In the reg, in the, in the regs, it talks about, you know, having that you have the strata and have to have a survey of the soil type.
Right.
So that you can address those septic issues. We'll follow up with it. Okay.
Well, will the last four lots just be off of a private road?
Those are off of county roads, those are all...
Those four that are turned a different direction.
Now, there, that comes off the County Road also.
Off County Road also.
Yeah, that's 2141. And the other ones are come off 2147. Yeah, there's no private roads, and there's not, I mean, it's just driveways.
Other than that, they've made all our subdivision regulations?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Tulley?
I'm good.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the plat subdivision called Final Plat, and it is the final, for Isabella Estates located in Precinct One.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the Final Plat, Isabella Estates, for filing purposes only. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, sir. Item Eighteen, consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, seconded by Commissioner McCam. All those in favor? Passes. Thank you very much for being here and enjoying our show.
Judge, I have you a...